Session of the Brookline Board of Selectmen for tonight, Tuesday, June 10. And we've had our executive session. We'd like to move now to selectmen announcements and updates. And Selectman DeWitt is our keeper of the community calendar.
I'm going to try to at least hit the highlights and obviously hope that my colleagues will chime in. This Thursday at 6:30 PM in Honeyman Hall in the main library, there will be a panel discussion on Brookline Complete Streets. This is hosted by the Green Caucus and Brookline Can and additional many, in addition, many other cosponsors. Complete Streets is a concept that integrates street sidewalk and streetscape design with the safety and convenience of multiple users and is sort of an approach that is being promoted very much these days and something that should be of interest to Brookline. On Saturday this weekend, June 14, the Billy Ward Playground, which has been under extensive renovations and improvements, will be opened with a public event starting at 1:00 PM from 1:00 to 3:00 PM. It's at the, it is located, it faces on both Brook Street and Aspen Wall Avenue in Brookline Village. And I gather there will be refreshments, including ice cream sandwiches. Also, on Saturday, June 14, the Chestnut Hill Village Associates, who are the town's first and oldest neighborhood association founded in 1939, celebrates its 75th anniversary and will be opening a time capsule that was sealed 25 years ago at the 25th anniversary. On Tuesday next week, in the main library, there will be an open house from 12:30 until 2:00 PM honoring retiring librarian Chuck Flaherty. And I've had a conversation with a couple of library trustees, and I gather it's going to be quite an event. And they are actually asking for RSV dates just because they're trying to keep track of how many people are planning to attend. And next Thursday, the 19th, from 1:30 until dusk, will be the first seasonal outdoor farmer's market in the Center Street West parking lot. Fresh local fruits, strawberries, I'm hoping, vegetables, cheeses, baked goods, prepared sauces, hard cider, if we approve it tonight, plants and flowers, and lots more. And just one other piece of information, which is not exactly an event, the New England Treatment Association, ah, New England Treatment Access, I got it right, wrong, who are the designated registered marijuana dispensary for Brookline, have obtained a lease with the former Brookline Bank that's at the corner of Washington Street, Route 9, and High Street. They intend, they say, to make as few modifications to the building as possible. But they know that there is a lot of interest on the part of the public and local residents. And they therefore will be holding at least one public forum to explain what their plans are. And there will also be a zoning hearing through the Brookline Planning Board and the Board of Appeals. And the town will be giving them, we have adopted, the Board of Selectmen have adopted regulations that are comparable to our alcoholic beverage licensing regulations. And so they'll have to be compliant with those regulations. And all of these things will be discussed at the public meeting that they will convene. They haven't set a date and time yet, but they said it will be occurring fairly soon. They also told me that since the state hasn't made a final decision about the registered marijuana dispensaries, they do not exactly have a timetable, other than they want to start to work getting the building ready for their use. But they don't know when they'll be able to be open.
Great.
That's it.
Other items from any of the other selectmen? I know Selectman Franco had a speaking engagement with the devotion third graders recently.
I did. That went very well. So it was the annual What Is JFK Mean to You program. The third graders at the devotion school. And I had the distinct pleasure of addressing the, that tough crowd and bringing the greetings of the Board of Selectmen and the Town of Brookline to them and congratulating them on their efforts. And that was about two weeks ago. So just catching up after town meeting.
Good. Did they sing Forever Young?
They did.
Tears to My Eyes.
A rousing rendition.
That was great.
And then last night, I actually went to the Brookline Neighborhood Association, the BNA Annual Meeting. So saw some of our neighborhood activists and heard a presentation about the recently approved Lawrence Neighborhood Conservation District. So it was a great, a great evening and great to see citizens out and interested in their neighborhoods.
Selectman Daley.
Yeah, once Saturday, I attended the Brookline Coolidge Corner Arts Festival. That was very good. And I heard a number of comments from people about what an excellent event it was. And I also was the speaker at, they're starting to, Roberta Winitzer started trying to organize some senior social conversation hours at the library. And I was the speaker at the last one, the most recent one, to talk about town meeting and sort of what's going on. And actually got a reasonable little crowd there. They're getting that launched. It's not, it's not every week, so you have to, I think, look for the notices. It's going to be every once a month or something like that.
I've been put on notice. I'm the future guest of this group, so.
Great. If there's nothing else, I will just note that on Thursday, Brookline Rotary is presenting its annual Community Service Leadership Awards. And offer my congratulations to this year's honorees, who are Paul Epstein, who is the guidance counselor at the high school, most, most of you know, and is the originator and the inspiration behind our teen center. And also a friend of mine named Murray Liverman, who was one of the original founders of the Brookline Chapter of Rotary International. And he's been doing nothing but contributing to this town for the last 50-plus years. So congratulations to the two of them. So let's move on now to our miscellaneous calendar. First matter is a question of approving the minutes of our June 2, 2014 meeting. Any revisions from any of the selectmen?
I had some small revisions.
And I did too. And I'm going to pass these down. And I will move that we approve the minutes of the June 2, 2014 meeting as revised. All those in favor say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman DeWitt?
I will abstain.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. And we'll move on now to a question of approving procurement of proprietary equipment in connection with the old Lincoln School. And Mr. Simmons, is that you?
Lawrence School as well. It's the next one.
Two.
There's two. It's Lawrence and Lawrence.
Doing them together, Lincoln and Lawrence. Thank you. So it's items B and C. Mr. Simmons, why don't you explain why a proprietary procurement is advantageous in this instance?
Usually, we go with public bidding, designer specifies three makes and models, get the best price. We've found over the years that certain things we should keep the same. It helps with efficiency, people beginning familiar with the equipment. We've narrowed it down to this list, and it works pretty well. The list involves door hardware, energy management systems, and fire alarms. What we have going on at the old Lincoln and the Lawrence, we're not replacing the fire alarms and the energy management systems. We're going to be putting in equipment that'll connect to the new system. It should be straightforward with the contractor, but I don't want him putting a Ford engine into a Chevy car. I want, I want to be able, it should be able to connect. So to make it very clear, I need a vote to say, we have this equipment. This is all I want to be put in, so it'll work with the existing systems. The same with the door hardware. I want to just carry one key. I don't want him to put in a different cylinder and a key. So that's where this comes from.
I understand. Any questions for members of the board? Nope. Seeing none, I am going to make the following motions, that we approve procurement of proprietary equipment in connection with the old Lincoln School and in connection with the Lawrence School for Door Hardware and Energy Management Systems Controls and Fire Alarm. All those in favor say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman DeWitt?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. It's unanimous. Thank you, Charlie. Next matter is the question of adopting a Transportation Access Plan Agreement or Tapper Annual Permit Fee in the amount of $3,000. Who do we have to?
Dan Bennett?
Not here. Should we hold it?
I believe, is there a Building Commission meeting going on? Yeah. So why don't you just hold it for a brief period until they come up?
So we'll hold item D on the miscellaneous calendar, move on to the question of approving and executing a contract in the amount of $467,000 in connection with Town Hall Garage's repairs. We also say anything?
Sounds like Building Commission to me.
Yeah.
I guess you probably ought to move to H.
E, yeah, E and F are both.
Okay. So we're going to hold items D, E, F, and G, and move on to H, which is the question of accepting a grant in the amount of $12,000 from the Brookline Community Foundation to fund summer camp scholarships through Brookline Recreation.
Hi there. Melissa Battey, Assistant Director at Recreation. Yes, this is almost an annual award grant that we receive, and it goes directly to support the children in our partnership programs at summer camp, which is close to 150 to 175 different campers that come to our camps throughout the summer through a partnership with the Brookline Mental Health Center, extended school year, and literacy and math through Project Discovery with the schools.
So this is terrific. We thank the Brookline Community Foundation.
I just have one question. So how many of the kids, we were saying 150 to 175. Are those the ones that are subsidized through this? Or are those the total number of kids in the summer?
Those are that are supported with this $12,000. And then additionally, the department has a separate financial aid program that supports that in addition.
Excellent. Excellent. Very good.
Great. Any further comment, question?
Great tradition. I hope it continues.
Me too.
Thank you. We do too.
So I move that we accept a grant in the amount of $12,000 from Brookline Community Foundation to fund summer camp scholarships through Brookline Recreation. All in favor say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman DeWitt?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. And our thanks go out to the Brookline Community Foundation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item I is the question of approving and executing a revocable license agreement with Beaver Country Day School and the Parks and Recreation Commission. And Steve?
Yes. First of all, I'm filling in for Director Paradies, who's at the HR board meeting. And Melissa is on her way to the Recreation Commission meeting. So I'm the third person in. This is an agreement and understanding between the town and Beaver Country Day on the use of fields. The fields in question on the town side are the sole upper and lower fields, the Baker School tennis courts, and the golf course. And of course, on the, the town would be using the Beaver Country Day fields as well. So this is a complete agreement on the use of the fields. We should say, and I want to mention one name in particular, the town council, Jocelyn Murphy, who worked long and hard on this agreement. The agreement is a, has a term that essentially is, essentially is legally for 10 years. However, there's an option out for both parties with a one-year written notice. And so either party could get out of this within one year. And in addition to that, and through some suggestions of members of the Board of Selectmen, the Recreation Commission adopted a policy which says that before entering into any revocable license agreement, that they will solicit need from the various departments, do they need these fields? They've adopted their policy. They have gone through and checked with all of the line departments to see if they would need these fields for the next calendar year. The answer is no. And so we feel comfortable in recommending that we enter into this agreement. And again, with the understanding that either party could get out of it within a year. The dollar amounts are at the back end of this contract. It's roughly about $800,000 over a period of 25 years. But again, the revocable license law requires that at the end of every 10 years, it has to be renegotiated. We set a, a long-term schedule in place with the understanding that if the fields are not needed by, for town use, that we would renegotiate in 10 years and enter a new one 10 years from now.
It's important to note that the town is also getting access to Beaver Country Day's fields for their.
Absolutely. And one other, that the, the school and town have had this relationship for many, many years. So.
My own daughter's played on that Beaver field. So questions. Selectman Daley?
Well, the memo from, to Mr. Kleckner from Lisa Paradies talks about this agreement being effective from July 1, 2014, to June 30, 2039. But that is incorrect, right? It's a 10-year agreement.
Well, the law, revocable license law, requires that the contract be terminated at the end of 10 years. We have built in a schedule that says that assuming that we renegotiate, that it would go on for another 10 years and then another 10 years.
But the other thing, I just want to make a comment, because some of you will remember, I objected the last time that this came before us, because it was, this, I objected to the town essentially giving away long-term use of some of its fields, when I thought, you know, I keep hearing about the crunch for our children to get field use. But this license, I just want to, I read it carefully and talked with Steve and Mel about this. And it is revocable annually. We, I mean, we can, with one year's notice, revoke this. So, and I did try to check as well with the schools to follow up. And they, they keep saying they, they don't think they need this. So I don't know why they are passing up the field with the artificial turf, but they, they seem to be doing that. So I think that the, this current agreement is much better than the one we looked at a couple of years ago. It does have more protection for the town, and we can, with one year's notice, get out of the disagreement.
Good. Any further comments, questions? Selectman DeWitt?
Questions. Will the revenue go into the general fund, or is this part of the revolving fund for the recreation?
This particular contract, the revenue would go into two funds, the Recreation Revolving Fund and the Golf Enterprise Fund.
Okay. But in both cases, it's targeted back to the rep programs?
Yes, absolutely.
And I shouldn't be jumping ahead, but I have to assume this is related to a later item on our calendar with regard to a pilot agreement?
They are two separate documents, two separate agreements. They happen to have some language that's.
Yeah. A couple of years ago, they were actually tied together.
Yeah.
But, you know, the language.
I know they are not legally tied together, but the negotiations have resulted in two agreements.
Right. But several years ago, when we, when it was proposed, they were tied together.
They were, the wording of the documents tied them together. And that was one of my objections.
Anything further?
And that's one of the improvements that have been made in this latest.
All right. So I'm going to move that we approve executing, approve and execute the revocable license agreements between Beaver Country Day School and the Park and Recreation Commission and the Town of Brookline. All those in favor say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman DeWitt?
Aye.
Selectman Woszinski?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you, Steve. Appreciate it.
The Building Commissioners here.
Yep. So we're going to move back to, to items D through G, which we had postponed. I see Mr. Quigley getting up. So item D is the question of adopting a Transportation Access Plan Agreement Annual Permit Fee in the amount of $3,000. Mr. Bennett, Building Commissioner.
Good evening. This is a result of the approval of Brookline Place recently at town meeting and an effort to preempt what happens over there. But the Transportation Access Plan Agreement, it would be an annual permit that I would issue. Under the zoning bylaw, it specifies what criteria would be in there. It helps enforce and make sure that the property owners adhere to this transportation demand management plan. And that would be an annual fee. It would identify the number of spaces and have conditions such as the number of bicycles, number of spaces, any agreements that they made with MBTA transit type of things. And we would work with the Transportation Department, the Planning Department, and Building Department with respect to the enforcement.
Great. Other than Brookline Place, are there other places where this would apply?
In the future, I don't know. I am having staff from Planning and Building look into to see if there was something that we should have had that we do not have. At this point, we haven't identified anything.
And how did we determine $3,000 to be the amount?
In, with the Transportation Department and Planning and my staff, we came up with the amount of hours each person would take, multiply that with the assistance of Sean with salaries and annual pay, and came up with just under $3,000. So we run it up to $3,000.
Great. Thank you. Selectman DeWitt?
I just would like to be clear that this is for the landlords' transportation demand management plan, because I understood that there would also possibly be individual TDMs as part of lease agreements.
Well, it would start out, I would imagine, through a special permit, some sort of a condition with the zoning board of appeals. And we could certainly look at an overall permit that would cover the entire property and/or separate it to each individual tenant as they came into.
I guess I should be clear, I'm asking the question because we even, our MOA, agreed to document the various accommodations that people are making. And I just, I'm trying to be clear in my mind that we'll have data that will say not just what the landlord is doing, but also what may be included in subleases, for example.
Yeah. I mean, we would enforce any subsequent agreements that the property owner has made with the tenant and follow up on those annually as well. But it would all be done at the same time at the same property.
Selectman Woszinski?
If I recall, the MOA, the Brookline Place Memorandum of Agreement, has some very involved requirements, including taking a survey and analyzing it. So it, I don't, do you anticipate town staff to be doing that?
Through the Transportation Department, they would probably take the heavy load on a lot of this. If they needed outside help or consultant, we would get that and then try to backcharge the owner or the tenant.
Okay. So the $3,000, I guess where I'm heading is asking the question, is the $3,000 enough to cover our expenses?
Based on our initial review and looking at Brookline Place, we felt that it was.
We can revisit this in the future if the need arises, though.
Certainly, as we move forward, if during the zoning board of appeals process or some other review criteria came up, that we felt something else had to be added, we could come back and ask or seek consulting services.
What I believe I heard you say reinforce, if I'm wrong, tell me so, the special permit could actually lay out the conditions that would satisfy Selectman Woszinski's question about how we will collect all this data.
Yes. They could, they could certainly get more specific than the MOA, yes.
Right.
Okay. Further questions? Then I move that we approve the adoption of a Transportation Access Plan Agreement Annual Permit Fee in the amount of $3,000. All in favor say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman DeWitt?
Aye.
Selectman Woszinski?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, Commissioner Bennett. Moving on to an item E, it's the question of approving and executing a contract with Patriot Restoration in connection with Town Hall Garage's repairs, Phase 4. Mr. Quigley?
Good evening. This is a contract with Patriot Restoration, amount of $467,000. It was just a couple of hours ago, considered by the Building Commission and voted in the affirmative by them. And if approved tonight, the work would be expected to commence soon as school is out and perhaps even try to get some things done before then without, that would be, be able to get done before school is out and have all the work complete by Labor Day.
Selectman Daley?
Yeah. I hope this is the last phase for the garage, because it seems like we are constantly voting money for this work in the town garage.
Well, it, it's likely to be the last phase. I just, you, you're constantly voting contracts, but I would like to point out that the appropriation was done many years ago, and we are still within that original appropriation by town meeting. So there's been no cost overruns. It's just that because of the nature of the work in the short summer seasons, it had to be broken up into a number of different phases. And that was originally anticipated.
Okay.
I will say that the garage appears to be dry or drier anyway at this point.
Except the other day when we had that damage.
Well, what are we getting in Phase 4?
Basically, Phase 4 is to, the, it's the service drive between the library and the Pierce Cafeteria. It's to remove that and waterproof the deck below, because that, I don't know, if you ever get down to that corner, it's still leaking like hell down there. And then it's also around on the school street side of the building, outside of the cafeteria. Again, it's over the garage area. So a lot of that, those concrete areas will be broken up, waterproofing redone, and then concrete placed again back in those areas. It's not a terribly interesting project, but it's necessary.
So does that mean that any portion of the Pierce garage or the town garage is going to be unavailable for some period of time during the summer?
Yes. The, the, about 20% of the, where the employees park, will be out of commission for the summer. But it's consistent with prior years, and the demand is down because people are on vacation, school people are gone. And this also, so yeah, but that's basically the project, so.
Anything further? I move that we approve and execute a contract in the amount of $467,000 with Patriot Restoration, Inc., in connection with the Town Hall Garage Repairs, Phase 4. All in favor say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman DeWitt?
Aye.
Selectman Woszinski?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Next item is the question of executing and approving a contract in the amount of $568,000 in connection with structural improvements to Fire Station 7.
Yes. Just, just a minor correction. It's $568,660.
Thank you.
And it's with West Construction Corporation. And this is for structural improvements to Station 7, as well as life safety improvements, meaning fire alarm. And again, the, if, if you, this was just approved by the Building Commission, a couple of hours, within the last hour or two. And the work is, would be anticipated to start, if approved tonight, in the next couple of weeks. And is anticipated to be, it's planned to be complete within 90 days after the start of construction.
Is Station 7 the Washington Square one?
Yeah, up by, right. 665 Washington Street, up Washington Square, right.
A very tight site.
Very tight.
Okay. Further questions or comments? I move that we approve and execute a contract in the amount of $568,660 with West Construction Corp. of Halifax in connection with structural improvements to Fire Station 7. All in favor say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman DeWitt?
Aye.
Selectman Woszinski?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Mr. Chairman, I believe the deputy chief would like to say a word or two about that too.
I didn't know if there was any questions about the station work. The chief asked me to be here if there was any questions on.
No, maybe you can just give us a real quick thumbnail of what it is.
Just basically, if you remember, a few years ago, Station 7 closed. We moved Engine 3 to Brookline Village, and we moved Fallon Ambulance out to Station 5 and Babcock Street. We're going to follow that same plan. It worked for us. That was a shorter period of time, but it did work. And that's a plan we're going to go with this time, because the station will have to be closed for a short period of time. There's a construction, pre-construction meeting tomorrow. I'll know more then. But it's, there'll, there'll be some time where the engine and the ambulance won't be in the station.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. I've already voted it.
Thanks, Bobby.
Item G is the question of approving change orders in connection with Fire Station Number 1 and Number 4 for life safety improvements.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The first one is change order number 2, the amount of $5,597.55 to the Contract with Systems Electrical Services Incorporated of Chelsea, Massachusetts. And this is for accessible walkway changes and a new drain receptor in the basement of the building. Two items on that change order. And change order number 3 is the amount of $13,390.98. This is for added sprinkles in the third floor and partial second floor of the building into interstitchel spaces. into interstitial spaces above hard ceilings that it was not known at the time that there were interstitial spaces. And when we started doing the work, it became apparent, so we need to put sprinklers in those interstitial spaces.
I'm sorry, I don't know that word. What is interstitial?
In other words, the ceiling, there's a, there's a, there's a, this ceiling here, there's another ceiling above it. And, and it's, it's a code requirement because of the, the, I think it's over 30 inches above.
Are we talking about drop ceilings, or are we talking about?
No, it's a hard plastic ceiling. If it was a drop ceiling, we would have known immediately, but it was not, you know, and it's just, we never would have anticipated it, and we didn't have any drawings of the building. I mean, it's built in the 18, whatever.
Got it. Couldn't we just tear out the false ceiling and go with the original ceiling?
There is no original ceiling, it's the structural deck.
Uh huh.
Yeah.
I see. Okay.
Good try.
Was Fred Lebo in here?
You just want to, you just want to spin a sledgehammer.
Further questions? I move that we approve the change orders in connection with Fire Stations One and Four Life Safety Improvement Project. Change order number two, System Electrical Services, in the amount of $5,597.55. And change order number three, for System Electrical Services, in the amount of $13,390.98. All those in favor say aye. Selectman Daley.
Aye.
Selectman DeWitt.
Aye.
Selectman Washinsky.
Aye.
Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm going to go slightly out of order here and take item K, which is the temporary alcoholic beverage license for selling wine at the farmer's market, because I know our.
Car Sider, I did hear.
I know they're here, so I want, usually we omnibus these things, but I know you're sitting there. So why don't you tell us about, about the farmer's market?
Yeah, I'm Nicole Blum, and I'm one of the owners of Car Sider House, and we do a lot of farmer's markets in Massachusetts, we're a farm winery. We usually have about three or four varieties that we sell, and we do samples, one ounce pours, and we sell from the table there, so I don't know if you have any questions about that.
When is the event?
It's the farmer's market, the Brookline Farmer's Market in Coolidge Corner. So it's every, well, we'll be there every other Thursday.
Oh, I see, okay. And what times?
It starts at one to six.
One thirty to dusk.
One to dusk, yes.
Can I ask, though, so are your people there tip certified?
It'll be me, and I'm tip certified.
Okay.
Yeah.
Will you offer samples?
Yes, yeah, we do one ounce pours.
Yeah, because we do, we do have a lot of students in town. You know, we ask anyone serving alcohol to be very conscientious about requesting identification.
Yes, yeah, I mean, I've gone through the training, but it's all pretty, you know, it's, it's common sense, yeah.
Okay, further questions? Then I move that we grant a temporary farmer winery license to sell wine for off-premises consumption to Car Sider House in Haley, Mass. in connection with farmer's market, to be held at Coolidge Corner Center Street Parking Lot from June 19th to October 20th, 2014.
October 30th.
I'm sorry, October 30th, 2014, from 1:30 PM to dusk. All those in favor say aye. Selectman Daley.
Aye.
Selectman DeWitt.
Aye.
Selectman Washinsky.
Aye.
Selectman Franco.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Right, thank you.
Thank you, good luck.
And you're looking forward to trying your hard cider.
And then also, I move that we grant a temporary all kinds alcoholic beverage license to Pine Manor College in connection with events on June 21st, 2014, and June 28th, 2014, as described in our agenda. All those in favor say aye. Selectman Daley.
Aye.
Selectman DeWitt.
Aye.
Selectman Washinsky.
Aye.
Selectman Franco.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. We have on the agenda the question of setting our board's summer meeting schedule. What's that?
You can hold it to the end.
All right, why don't we hold that to the end? That's a great idea. And now we'll move to our regular calendar, and our first item is a proposed proclamation, which would proclaim October 19th through October 25th, 2014, as Brookline Sister City Week.
And we have, we have a lot of people here from the Sister City Committee.
And Selectman Daley is intimately involved in this as well, so why don't you?
This is Richard Seagan, who's the president of Brookline Sister City.
Thank you, Nancy, and I thank you all for allowing us to spend a few minutes with you this evening, and I'm joined by several of our board members. I want to, first of all, just thank you for your past support, both as a board as well as individually. Some of you have been incredibly helpful, and we really appreciate that. So, and thank you also for considering this proclamation. I don't know if you have any questions about it. I think the proclamation fairly accurately reflects a few of the many things that we've been involved in, in terms of the cultural relationship and the partnership between Kewa and the town of Brookline for the last 27 years. I don't know if any of you saw, there was an article in the front page of the New York Times last month about the epidemic of chronic kidney disease of unknown origin in Nicaragua and Central America. The Times article reported that there were 20,000, more than 20,000 deaths attributed to the epidemic. And when I read that article, as I said in a opinion piece that was published in the TAB, it made me proud in some ways, as well as very sad. It was, I was proud because I knew that the town of Brookline and the Sister City Project, and our health committee in particular, had been involved in some of the earliest research and investigatory work in Kewa, because the people in Kewa brought that problem to us. They brought that issue to us, and we, going back 10 years now, have been involved in trying to identify the causes of the epidemic. Fortunately, Dan Brooks, who was a member of our health committee, and who was at the BU School of Public Health, got more involved and got a grant to do research, and has been extensive research done to try to investigate, uncover the causes. The sad part is that they have not identified the cause. And I don't know if you, any of you were at the last mayoral visit in 2012, when Saida Hernandez, the then director of health, spoke, along with Dan Brooks, the professor from BU School of Public Health and a member of our health committee, spoke at a forum that we had at the Brookline Health Department, and appealed to us to do more, to help us, because she was witnessing firsthand the challenge with dealing with a real-life crisis and people dying and suffering in that community. So that, that effort continues. If there's a few minutes left this evening, Dr. Peter Moyer and Dr. Kaia Vanderzeel, who were on our health committee, just returned. They led a group of six graduate students in public health to Kewa last Sunday. Dr. Moyer and Dr. Vanderzeel have just returned this past Sunday. Dr. Moyer is, is, had dental surgery today, unrelated to his visit last week. And, but Dr. Vanderzeel would be happy to say a few words about the, about the trip and what she experienced there. I just wanted to see if you had any questions about the proclamation. I think it cites things that are true, as I said before, and accurate. But if you do have any questions about the proclamation, I'm happy to respond to them. The, what precipitates and the rationale for the proclamation is the visit, the upcoming visit of the new mayor of Kewa, Reyna Chavaria Perez, who we've invited and has accepted our invitation to visit in October. We're, we're hoping to describe October 19th to the 25th as Brookline Sister City Week. We've already scheduling a range of activities for her during that week. I think it should be educational for us as well as her. Hopefully a productive visit, similar to the last visit by the last mayor who visited in 2012.
Thank you. How are our ambulance purchase efforts coming along?
Oh, yeah, I can report on that.
Please, Nancy, thank you.
We want to thank you, Ken, and all the members of the Rotary who contributed to that recently, and I know many of you on this board, I asked to help with that, and we have been fundraising for a year. Unfortunately, we kind of started this effort just before the Boston Marathon bombing, and I think maybe that rightfully diverted a lot of people's charitable intentions to something closer to home. But we're actually pretty close now to getting a good used ambulance for the area. And I think Kaia is probably going to tell us about the state of the current ambulance, which I understand is not working more than it's working. But we are within a couple thousand dollars of what we think we need. And so we hope by, by this October visit of the mayor that we will have kind of closed that gap and be able to, to get a good used ambulance, at least. We'd love to get them a new one, but I don't know if that's on the cards. But anyway, I appeal to anyone who's listening and who wants to contribute to that effort to, to get in touch with one of us.
And we thank you, Nancy, for your effort and help in that regard. Most recently, we received an award, or a grant, from the Rotary for $2,500. We're very appreciative of that, and Fallon Ambulance has also committed to a contribution of $5,000. So we are on the way. We're trying to get an estimate for a used ambulance. We would hope that we might be able to buy a new ambulance. When we say ambulance, it's really in quotes, it's more of an SUV that's outfitted to serve as an ambulance, because it has to overcome and drive the.
Dirt roads, wet conditions. But this is to, and maybe Kaia can tell us more about this, but it's, it's a half an hour out, out to some of these more remote areas from the center of town, and the center of town is, is health clinics, not, it's, you have to go to another town to get to a hospital. So having a working ambulance is critically important.
Dr. Vanderzeel.
Yeah, Kaia Vanderzeel, thank you very much for your time. As Richard said, I just got back, I'd never been to Kewa or Nicaragua before. I've been to other country, other countries in Latin America, but it was a marvelous experience for me, and I'm hoping we got our students off to a good start. In terms of the ambulance, it is working now, so they don't have need for it at this point, but how long it'll last, I don't know. It does have under 200,000 miles, but when you talk about that terrain, as you were saying, I mean, we went out to Cristo Rey, which is the furthest one, you're right, it's about half an hour. But, you know, you're really going up and down, and it's not because it's mountains, it's because the road has big defects in it. It's barely wide enough for a car to go by sometimes, they are working on the road. Some of it's been graded, and it's very nice, but it's really treacherous. I was thinking we might just fall over the edge there sometimes. If you can't, it's almost impassable when there's rain. I mean, I can't imagine a woman in labor having to negotiate that to get out of town. And then they're, they're coming into the town of Kewa, where there is still no hospital, anyway. So that's really great that we're going to help them with a quote-unquote ambulance, but it is running right now. Yeah, so I was going to go on to talk about the public health students. There are six public health students there now, one from Yale and five from BU. There are a few things that they're going to be involved with this summer. One is this chronic kidney disease of unknown origin, and there is not much treatment for these people. And when we, this is a, this is an epidemic that started maybe about 20 years ago. The people are dying at a really young age. The mayor herself had a brother who died at the age of 37 of chronic kidney disease. They're dying often in their 40s. And they get identified, they, they're sugarcane workers by and large, and they get identified because the sugarcane companies set up something where they have to get a blood test, a creatinine, which is kidney function. I mean, by the time that goes up, you've already knocked out 50% of your kidney function. And then they can't work, and then who supports their family, you know, and they... Now, the treatment is dialysis or transplant, well, transplant's non-existent. And hemodialysis, where you actually have a port in the, in a artery and a vein, to do it is pretty much non-existent, and so they're relying on the peritoneal dialysis, which works very well. And they have a pilot project in Chinondega for that. But they only can manage 10 people in this, and you can imagine the need is much greater. And they're getting people to do it at home, but you can't do it if you have a dirt floor. You have to have really sterile conditions, because otherwise you get peritonitis, and that can kill you as well. So it's a huge problem. The students are going to work on looking at water supply and where these chronic, these people live who have chronic kidney disease, and trying to see if there's any relationship. There's a lot of different sources of water, some places have deeper wells than others, and they may be better. It's also a question of roundup is, is an issue here, especially in hard water. I mean, the, there's so many issues to, to deal with. So the students are going to work on the map, mapping, and try to figure out if there's any correlation there, and also on attitudes of the people toward peritoneal dialysis. Because many people, of course, think it's what's killing their loved ones, their loved ones are near death when they get to peritoneal dialysis anyway, and so it's connected in their minds. So that's one of the projects. There's another, also, a very high incidence of teen pregnancy. Forget the, I think they said 35% of the currently pregnant women are 17 and younger. They recently had a 12-year-old with a baby, who had a baby. It's very interesting, they're, the government is really behind a project to try to stem this, this issue, because when the girls are pregnant, they often don't go to school, they never really go back to school, although they can go to school, but they don't want to. And they don't really see much available for them. So our students are going to work with sex ed teachers, who are in all the secondary, the three secondary schools in the area. So the government provides textbooks and stuff for these, these teachers to, to teach the kids and have what they call is, they're conversations with the students. And our students are going to try to see if they can set up some conversations with the parents about this, because the parents and the students aren't talking to each other. I mean, those are just, and there's going to be a dental project of some sort that's going to happen. So, and we made some connections with, between people who'd never met each other, the professor at the, and a doctor at the medical school in Leon, an epidemiologist who's in the town, and someone who's on planning, the planning board, I guess you'd call it, who deals with water and housing, and, I mean, it was... There's a lot for these students to do in the five to nine weeks that they have left there. And that's just a little part of it. I mean, I was just amazed, these people are amazing with what they do with little resources they have. It's incredibly hot there, I mean, we tired out just from the heat. And they have, they have so much heart. I'm just really happy that we're involved with them.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
Yeah, no, I just want to say that one of the fascinating things was, I think everyone just assumed at the beginning that it was pesticides in the sugar fields that were causing this. And it was the group that launched by our Sister City project that went down there that determined, no, that was, that might be one contributing factor, but it wasn't the overriding factor in this, this chronic kidney disease, which affects not just this town, but the whole area, so it's, you know...
In other areas of the world as well, Sri Lanka has it, and there it seems to be related to roundup. So that's why we're interested in that as well. I mean, it's a, it's a huge, huge problem. And, and there's a group from Harvard and BU working on genetic aspects, a lot of intermarriage. I ran into some little boys who I said, you know, there are like maybe 1,000 households in the main part of Kewa, I said, how many people can you count that are related? How many families are related to you here? He said 10. I mean, they're small towns, and, and they tend to stay in those towns, so they, you know, they marry relatives often. So there may be something there as well. It's a, it's a big problem with no clear answers yet, but yeah.
Thank you.
But again, just one other question about the kidney disease. I, I am not up to date, but what I recall is that originally it was associated particularly with agricultural workers.
It is, yes, and longshoremen, and people who are working in hot, hot climates, doing hard work. Yeah, and they think it.
But male.
Male, because the women are not doing that sort of work. It turns out some of the women and teenagers who haven't done that work have some of the markers for the disease, so there may be some genetic susceptibility as well. But they're thinking part of it may be not drinking enough water.
Yeah.
Or having water that's not.
Not having clean.
As clean as it should be, that, you know, people are suspicious about drinking it.
Which is an issue for us, because we go there and we don't drink the water, but that's because we would get sick from the bacteria in the water. Yeah, anyway.
Selectman Daley, do you want to make the motion for adoption of the resolution?
I would, and I'm, I'm just going to say, I'm not going to read it, but it's, it's talking about all that is... I'll read one little part of it, maybe, that.
Good.
When the mayor, Reyna Chavaria Perez, am I saying that right? Is coming and to visit us in October 2014, and it says, whereas a wide range of activities are being planned in conjunction with the mayor's visit, including meetings with town officials and visits to Town Hall, Town Schools, the library, and the State House. the library, and the state house, an appearance before the Board of Slackmen, a form on chronic kidney disease of unknown origin in collaboration with the Brookline Health Department, and an offer through Brookline Adult and Community Education, and a celebration on October 23rd, at which time Governor Michael N. Kitty Dukakis and the Honorable Representative Joseph Kennedy will join us in welcoming the mayor. And then it goes on for the resolution that this is, October 19th to the 25th will be Brookline Sister City Week. So I am happy to move this proclamation and we look forward to meeting the mayor.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Selectman Daley.
Aye.
Selectman DeWitt.
Aye.
Selectman Woszinski.
Aye.
Selectman Franco.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you. We'll hopefully join us during Brookline Sister City.
Definitely.
Moving on, we have two interviews for the Martin Luther King Committee, and the first one is Malcolm Cawthon. Malcolm, I see you there. Come on forward, please.
Hello?
Good evening. Why don't you tell us a little bit about yourself for anybody who doesn't know you and why you, what you've done on planning Martin Luther King Celebration events and why you'd like to continue doing that.
Sure. My name is Malcolm Cawthon. My family moved to Brookline in 1973, really with the intent for my parents who started in segregated schools for their kids to go to good integrated schools. And so I went through the Brookline school system. As I was working around the Midwest, we, my wife and I made a conscious choice to come back, to send our children through schools here. The fifth, Cawthon graduated from Brookline High on Sunday, and I teach history at the high school and live in Brookline. So for me, I have a really strong connection to the town, and it's something that, for me personally, that, you know, my family has made a really conscious effort to stay involved with the town. And it has been very good to us. So I consistently see myself and try to find ways to give back to the town that's given so much to me and really all of my family members. With that being said, I've been the emcee for the Martin Luther King Celebration for the past four years. I've been on the committee for the last two years. And, you know, both venues for me are really thrilling. Emceeing is really a great honor that I cherish every January. And being in the planning has been something I really relish doing and working with towns' members who are so dedicated to remembering Dr. King and his legacy.
Selectman Daley.
I just want to note that Malcolm has been a valuable member of our diversity committee that drafted the bylaw which recently passed at town meeting, and I thank him for his help.
It was certainly an honor to be on that committee.
We still have some more work to do, but I mean-
I'm learning that in Brookline politics, that it never really ends.
I'm giving everyone a little bit of a break.
But that's fine.
Selectman DeWitt.
I'm just going to comment that I think he's done, Malcolm's done a fabulous job as the emcee. And in many ways, what I like is that he brings his history and experience and provides a continuing thread, whereas the programs change significantly, but your presence there to me is an important anchor, and I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Very good. Anything else? Thank you, Malcolm. Appreciate your presence here tonight.
Thank you.
We'll be making appointments soon, but not tonight.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And Bobby Nabel, I also see here, Bobby, would you come forward and?
We have to say Bobby has one of the most extensive resumes I've seen. Anyone applying for one of our committees?
It's the one that I used and no longer need to use.
So Bobby, I'm sure everybody knows you on this board, but for people watching at home, why don't you introduce yourself and tell us about your interest in this committee.
I'm Bobby Nabel. I've lived in Brookline since 1966 and lived in Precinct 11 since 1968. I'm a town meeting member, have been since I retired from work, so that's about 2,000, and an advisory committee member. I've served on the Martin Luther King Celebration Committee for the last three years and have enjoyed that very much.
Bobby, you were one of the main impetus for suggesting that the Martin Luther King Committee not just confine itself to the Martin Luther King Celebration, but maybe doing some other programming over the course of the year. Why don't you talk a little bit about what you might envision the committee doing?
I think that it's really important that we do the celebration of Martin Luther King and keep that as part of the basis for how we think about the issues of race and diversity and the town's values. But I also think that there are enough complex issues that the town will want to work on that it helps to be able to do that through the year in various ways, so that the question comes up in different forms and that there are opportunities to approach it from different perspectives. One of the things about the Martin Luther King Celebration is that it has evolved over time where it's not just a recognition of what happened in the sixties, but it is a way of looking at the present from that perspective and measuring where we are from that perspective.
Thank you. Questions, board members?
Well, probably more of a comment, but I have great respect for your thoughts and judgment, and I know you've spent a substantial part of your life in education, and I actually just learned that you were a music major, which was a different start. But I'm interested in your thoughts about how we can do a better job, or maybe we are doing a great job, I have to say, at this point in time, I'm not even connected with this, but just integrating the principles that you've talked about into the system that, into our school system and, you know, making it. I am very aware of the concept of implicit racism and stereotyping, and I know kids are very vulnerable to images and stereotyping. And I don't know if you have thoughts about how we can approach that, but I would really love to think about it if you have it.
I think it's important, for one, for kids to know the history so that they can measure where there's been change and where there hasn't. I think it's essential for them to know that it is individual action as well as group action that contributes to change and that therefore they have a responsibility for that. I think they need to be able to look at one another and their origin and their background, knowing that we are a product of that and that each of us. And so that it is, it means that none of us is without the possibility of being limited by our background, which means we need to be more charitable toward those from different backgrounds. We also have to be more sharing about how we differ so that we can understand that better. I think the schools can very definitely participate in that, giving us perspectives of what it means to be developed over time from a set of experiences that may differ from others. I think that as school, it's difficult because these are risky undertakings, that it is very possible to be hurt or to hurt others. But I also think that a school is one of the safest places potentially to try to teach what it's like to understand someone else's experience. And I believe very much in the public school system because I think that's where we come together. I don't like the idea of a multiple private school system in which we don't share experiences, we don't share some view of history. So at any rate, but it is my feeling that public schools have a role to play and can be very successful in that.
Thank you.
Good. Any other questions from board members or comments? Well, thank you Bobby, appreciate your comments, and we'll be making appointments very soon.
Thank you.
Good evening. Next, calendar number eight is the question of authorizing the filling of two HVAC maintenance tradesmen positions in the building department. This was the result of our recent budgetary process. Mr. Simmons again.
How are you?
Great, thank you.
Yes.
Why don't you tell us about what these two tradesmen will be doing for us?
Primarily, they're going to be doing filter replacement and air conditioning and temperature controls. We've always subcontracted that out, and we have an opportunity, I think with the economy and with the fact that a lot of our buildings are in pretty good shape, that we could do it in-house and do it cheaper and better. So I got a little analysis, and I think the numbers are there.
Yep. So the board and people listening will remember that this was part of this year's fiscal year 2015 budget, which was just approved by town meeting, the establishment of these two new positions, which previously had been done outsourced, and there seems to be good evidence that it can be done cheaper and better in-house. Any questions or comments?
Well, given that I know what Mr. Simmons does in monitoring everything, I'm sure they will be very productive and it will be a better way to get the word out.
Very good. If there are no further questions, I move that we authorize the filling of two HVAC maintenance tradesmen positions in the building department. All in favor, say aye. Selectman Daley.
Aye.
Selectman DeWitt.
Aye.
Selectman Woszinski.
Aye.
Selectman Franco.
Aye.
And the chair also votes aye. Thank you, Mr. Simmons. And next, we have a question of authorizing the filling of the zoning coordinator position in the planning and community development department, regulatory planning division. Allison.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Allison Steinfeld, Planning Director. As you know, this is a new position. It was created with the support of the building commissioner and as well as town clerk. It is transferring responsibilities or non-statutory responsibilities from the town clerk's office to the planning department to provide professional and administrative support to the zoning board of appeals. Basically, the coordinator will be doing scheduling, noticing, and ensuring that deadlines are met. Failure to meet a ZBA deadline could result in constructive or automatic approval. The coordinator will also be responsible for coordinating activities between building, planning, and the town clerk's office, and also between the planning board and the ZBA. And coordinator will also provide additional staff support to the building department, specifically the chief building inspector, who has been distracted from some of his other responsibilities in staffing the ZBA. And as a reminder, for those of you who remember, in 2012, the Collins Report recommended that this function be transferred to the planning department. Quite honestly, it makes the most sense since planners are obviously the ones who deal with zoning in conjunction with the building department. So this builds upon a very good working relationship that we already have with the building department.
Thank you, Ms. Steinfeld. Any questions or comments from board members? Again, this is a position that was authorized by town meeting a couple weeks ago as part of the budgetary process. Anything? Selectman Daley?
Yeah, I do have one. Is this the position that Maria, I'm forgetting her last name, has been doing on a temporary basis?
No, Maria Morelli was hired as a consultant to support our efforts for, strictly for the 40B Hancock Village proposal.
I see, okay.
Okay. No further questions? I move that we authorize the filling of a vacancy in the position of zoning coordinator in the planning and community development department, regulatory planning division. All those in favor, say aye. Selectman Daley.
Aye.
Selectman DeWitt.
Aye.
Selectman Woszinski.
Aye.
Selectman Franco.
Aye.
And the chair also votes aye. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Next is a matter for the authorizing the filling of a vacancy of senior audit clerk in the finance department, comptrollers division.
Hi, good evening. Michael Di Pietro, Town Comptroller.
Hi, Mike.
I'm here tonight looking for authorization to fill a vacancy of senior audit clerk in the department. It's due to a retirement. The current person had over fifteen years, is retiring this month. This position basically reviews and audits all the various town accounts payable invoices. We have one other position between those two, review all invoices, both school and town, whether supplies, utilities, construction projects, et cetera. So looking for authorization to fill the position.
Thank you. Any questions, comments from board members? All right. I just want to, I should have mentioned this in the last two hires too, I want to make sure that we're seeking as diverse a candidate pool as possible, and I hope you will make every effort in working with the personnel, human resources department to make sure that's the case.
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you. If there are no further questions or comments, I move that we authorize the filling of a vacancy in the position of senior audit clerk in the finance department, comptrollers division. All those in favor, say aye. Selectman Daley.
Aye.
Selectman DeWitt.
Aye.
Selectman Woszinski.
Aye.
Selectman Franco.
Aye.
And the chair also votes aye.
Thank you.
Item 11 is postponed for anybody keeping score, and we'll move on to item 12, which is the question of authorizing the filling of a vacancy in the position of lead teacher at the Sewer Recreation. Okay, we're going to postpone 12 for later in tonight's meeting. Instead, we'll go to 13, the question of authorizing the filling of the following vacancies within the public works department, assistant civil engineer and water pipe layer laborer. Mr. Papasturgen, Commissioner Papasturgen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before you to get authorization to fill three positions, the first is the assistant civil engineer's position in the engineering and transportation division. That position became vacant due to a resignation of one of our engineers. He moved on to take a better job with the T as a construction engineer, so we're happy for him. This is a semi-senior level position, and it has many duties and responsibilities, particularly construction, engineering, and supervision, contract administration, engineering investigations for sewer drain and water distribution systems, and he also provides a certain level of supervision over other engineering personnel. The other two positions are entry-level positions within the water and sewer division. The title is water pipe layer slash laborer. These are both vacant as a result of internal promotions to higher grades. The positions ahead of those became vacant due to retirements. So we seek your authorization to fill all three of these positions at this time.
Thank you. Comments, questions from board members?
Well, I just would like to make a comment because I gather our director of water and sewer has just recently received an award.
Yes, he did receive an award. Maybe I could let him tell you about that at some point, but, no, I'll tell you about it.
Okay.
Because he's going to be talking to you pretty soon about water and sewer rates.
I wonder, but maybe we'll hold it until we talk about the water rates.
Okay, we can do that.
Goodwill, I'll mention the same thing I mentioned a moment ago. I hope that we're going to seek a diverse candidate pool and that you'll work with Sandra Graboe, our human resources director, in seeking the most diverse qualified candidate pool as possible.
Yes, we're sure to do that.
I move that we authorize the filling of the following vacancies within the public works department, one assistant civil engineer, and two positions with the title water pipe layer laborer. All those in favor, say aye. Selectman Daley.
Aye.
Selectman DeWitt.
Aye.
Selectman Woszinski.
Aye.
Selectman Franco.
Aye.
And the chair also votes aye. Okay, thank you. We'll skip back now to item 12, which is the question of authorizing the filling of a vacancy in the position of lead teacher at the Sewer Recreation Center in the recreation department. Ms. Paradis.
Hi, good evening. Lisa Paradis, Recreation Director. I'm here tonight to seek authorization to hire for a lead teacher position at the Sewer Rec Center. It is a school year position, and it has been recently vacated, and we would seek to hire for an August 1st date. It is a revolving fund position as well.
Questions from board members? Questions from board members? Seems like we fill this position just about every year. Is there a reason why there's so much turnover?
There are several, yes, we fill this a lot. There are several teachers at the Sewer Center and it is a high turnover occupation.
Again, I'm hoping that you will and instructing you, in fact, to seek as diverse and a candidate pool as possible, working with our human resources director to do just that. I also move that we authorize the filling of a vacancy in the position of lead teacher, Sewer Recreation, in the recreation department. All those in favor, say aye. Selectman Daley.
Aye.
Selectman DeWitt.
Aye.
Selectman Waschinsky.
Aye.
Selectman Franco.
Aye.
And the chair also votes aye.
Thank you.
And that brings us to discussion of the solid waste contract. Item 14 on our agenda, it's a question of awarding and executing a contract for containers curbside collection, disposal of solid waste to Cassella Waste Management of Massachusetts. Commissioner Papa Sturgeon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This contract is actually for the, solely for the disposal of solid waste. When we advertised for proposals in January of this year, we did advertise for containers curbside collection and disposal of solid waste in attempt to solicit bids for both curbside collection and municipal solid waste and the disposal of solid waste from our transfer station. As I mentioned to you before, at this point, we're only moving forward with the disposal contract at this time, the disposal of solid waste. We did receive three bidders for disposal. Just as a note, our current price for disposal of solid waste is $88 a ton and the current host fee is $120,000 a year, which is a direct offset to the money that we pay for disposal of solid waste. The host fee comes about because of the capacity that we have at the transfer station. We are permitted for 135 tons per day at the transfer station. The town utilizes only 30 to 35 tons of that, so we make available the additional 100 tons for commercial waste that's brought into the transfer station and hauled away by the disposal contractor. And for that privilege, he pays us a host fee, generally monthly, but in this case, it's the annual amount on the current contract was $120,000 per year. So, the current contract price for disposal of solid waste with the disposal, with the host fee for FY 14 was $681,000 paid to Whitney Trucking. When we advertised for proposals, we did receive three bids for disposal of solid waste. The scope of work for this contract requires the contractor to reload the trash that we dump from curbside collection at the transfer station, haul it offsite and dispose of it. This is one of the few contracts that we have the legal authority to negotiate after bids are received. So, once we receive bids, we can sit down with the bidders and actually renegotiate the price to try to get a better deal. Solid waste contracts are one of the few contracts that you're allowed to do that in the state of Massachusetts. The low bids that we received after, well, let me cut to the chase. After we sat down and negotiated with all three vendors, one of the vendors did come in with a very, very low price as a result of the bidding process and he kind of set the bar for the others to work towards. But in the end, two of the three contractors did come down and absolutely ended up with identical prices. The prices were very good news from the town of Brookline. Our per-ton price dropped from $88 a ton to $68 per ton and locked in over a five-year period with a modest escalator annually. And the host fee rose from $120,000 to $140,000. So, rather than paying $681,000 that we're currently paying, the new annual cost would be $479,000, offering annual savings of a little over $202,000. So, I think that's real good news in the life of the contract. The town of Brookline will save a million dollars in disposal of solid waste. The contracted recommendation before you is the award of contract to Cassella Waste Management of Massachusetts, which is headquartered in Peabody, Massachusetts. They were also, in addition to providing the low initial price, was able to enhance their bid a slight amount by offering to take the town's street sweeping and catch basin cleanings at no charge for disposal. All we have to do is get it to their facility. That amounts to probably an additional savings of $26,000 a year in disposal costs because we do pay now to haul and dispose of those materials. I should make a note, and I know that you did receive a communication from the solid waste advisory committee, and I just wanted to touch briefly upon that. I know Mr. Dempsey is here. But in order to receive bids that were as unrestricted as possible, our bid specifications included the definition of disposal site. Now, this is the ultimate site where the trash ends up, as including but not limited to sanitary landfills, transfer stations, incinerators, and waste processing centers that are licensed, permitted, or approved to receive waste by all governmental bodies and agencies having jurisdiction, meaning that any disposal site that was ultimately chosen must be state-certified, permitted, and licensed for operation. Cassella operates a state-licensed and certified sanitary landfill in Southbridge, Massachusetts that includes a gas-to-energy plant that utilizes methane gas for the generation of electricity for about 2,000 homes in the area. So, it's a state-of-the-art waste disposal site. The second bidder, which also came in with a, after negotiating, came in with an identical price, was recycling solutions out of Dedham. He's the operator of the Dedham Transfer Station for the town of Dedham. He sent, they send their waste to both waste-to-energy plants, which are incinerators, and landfills. The choice is generally theirs and depending on the type of waste that they're disposing of determines where they send it and that's totally up to their option. I would like to make note that when you compare greenhouse gas emissions from an incinerator and landfills, there is quite a difference. Emissions from landfills are substantially lower than incinerators, as you can imagine. They have a much lower carbon footprint. For example, the CO2 emissions from the Seemass Incinerator in southeast Massachusetts averages about 329 kilograms per ton of waste as compared to 59 kilograms per ton of waste at the Southbridge landfill. And that's a measurement of carbon dioxide emissions or greenhouse gases. Because Cassella is basically a recycling processor, that's his business, I should add that Cassella was our contractor that processed our recycling prior to the current waste management contract that we're under. He was our processing facility for many years and did a very good job at it. The waste that's deposited at his landfill is further separated to remove plastics and metals before landfilling occurs. Incinerators, on the other hand, tend to leave plastics in the waste stream to increase BTU values of the plant for energy conversion. That's what they do. I just want to explain to you just with a few bullet points, the basis of my recommendation to the board, and I think it's important to put those out so that you know why we felt strongly about this. The town's evaluating team that I assembled to review and analyze these bids felt strongly throughout the entire process that the Cassella bid was the favorable one for the following reasons. Cassella offered the lowest prices immediately as part of the bidding process prior to negotiating. Kind of set the bar for everybody and was wanted to do that immediately. Cassella has had an excellent history of service to the town of Brookline as our recycling processor, as I said, prior to the waste management current contract. Cassella's disposal facility is highly acclaimed by the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection, who recently increased their permit limit from 300,000 tons per year to 405,000 tons per year. DEP generally won't do that unless it's a well-run facility. Cassella, as I said, offered the additional savings by providing disposal of street sweepings and catch basin debris at no cost to the town for an additional $26,000 in annual savings. And the environmental benefit of incineration, in this case, I feel was offset by the substantial reduction in greenhouse gas emissions at the landfill and kind of reinforcing the recommendation. So, for all these reasons, I know it was quite lengthy, but the Department of Public Works does recommend that the contract be awarded to Cassella Waste Management of Massachusetts in the amount of $479,276. And it just should be noted that this contract will take effect July 1st of this year and the current term is for five years.
Thank you. Questions from board members? I know Mr. Dempsey probably wants to address us. We'll get to you in just a moment.
I think my questions might be for Mr. Dempsey because I want to learn more about the waste-to-energy process.
Why don't we call you up here, Mr. Dempsey? You're the...
I'm John Dempsey, chairman of the solid waste advisory committee. I'm here speaking for myself tonight in support of the commissioner's recommendation for the contract. SWAC did not have a meeting to discuss all the aspects of the contract, in large part because the discussions are private, they're sensitive between the commissioner, the contractors, and the union. And we don't, we're not privy to a lot of that information. And that's the way it is. We get it. I think that's fine with us. I, on the other hand, was able to meet with the commissioner and feel quite comfortable that his proposal is a step forward for us, for the town of Brookline. I can't speak for the rest of the solid waste advisory committee. My gut says that the majority of the committee would support the commissioner's recommendation. We did, we did, as the commissioner said, we did express an opinion about disposing in landfills as opposed to disposing in waste-to-energy plants. Basically, we thought that was a step backwards, going back to the Stone Age. But the commissioner did his homework and there are valid reasons, he's raised valid reasons for his leaning towards landfills. We get that as well, or I get that. I'm fine with the proposal, the recommendation from the commissioner. I think that most of SWAC, I don't want to speak for them, I can't speak for them, most of the solid waste advisory committee would agree with me and I urge you to sign the contract and move on forward.
Thank you.
I felt like Andy's putting me out of a job. You know, the tons are going down and the cost is going down, so I don't have anything else to do. I'll find something to do.
More improvements to come too, right?
Right. But on the other hand, may I say with all respect, I think you are partners in this and you talk to each other and that's very important. So, maybe Andy wouldn't have researched things quite as sufficiently as he did if he didn't know you were going to be there looking over his shoulder, although I'm sure he would have.
Yeah, I think he would have.
But my question is, okay, this Cassella, the recommended bidder on this contract, does operate a facility that does gas-to-energy? Is that what you were looking for?
Well, we understand that that's a...
It's methane.
Top-line landfill. We understand that. And one of the things they do at that landfill as opposed to some other landfills is they capture that methane, turn it and use it to produce electricity.
But that's not the same as what your letter...
They're just venting off the methane from the decaying organic materials in the landfill, collecting that methane and using it to power a generator, as opposed to an incinerator, which is actually burning the, all the materials, not just the organic materials.
Yeah, we have steam that then generates, yeah. We were also saying...
Okay, but he was just...
Organic, I'm sorry, the organics are going to be, we see the Commonwealth of Massachusetts heading towards a ban on organics going into landfills. So, that source of methane is going to, it's not going to be there after a while. That was one of our points.
Okay, but the, he was, was Andy not saying that the incinerator is as greater CO2 emissions?
Well, what he's referring to, and he's correct in this, is the, by burning, by burning anything, you're creating more carbon dioxide that is going to, which is a greenhouse gas. So, both the landfill and the waste-to-energy plant create greenhouse gases. Landfills, this particular landfill, does not create as much green hill...
Greenhouse.
Greenhouse.
Greenhouse gases as the waste-to-energy plant. And that's something that we did not look at. SWAC did not look at that.
Oh, I see, okay.
Okay.
I've just been researching Cassella and they do organic waste recycling. I mean, it strikes me that they're a very, they're a business organization that has jumped forward with regard to looking at the best ways of processing waste and heaven only knows, we've got a lot of competition out there for less desirable processing. So, it does seem to me that we are fortunate to be in the catchment area, I guess would be my comment.
I think the solid waste advisory committee would agree with you. We've had a long-time relationship with Cassella and some of the employees over at Cassella. We see them at conferences that, you know, so we network there and I agree with you. In fact, we were...
If we get to organic separation, they'll be able to handle it for us.
Well, we're headed that way. I mean, it's going to come at some point, whether we like it or not, it's coming.
Further comments, questions from board members? Selectman Franco.
All this talk about organic waste has me come off the question. I remember that there was a, or seem to remember that there was a regulation that came down that institutions can no longer dispose of organic waste in a landfill. And I'm just wondering what the implication is that, of that is on this contract and how we're disposing of our organic waste as a town.
The state did pass new regulations that effectively bans, effective October 1st of this year, organic waste from large businesses or institutions into the municipal waste stream. The schools have already dealt with that. They've been taking care of food waste separately for years. It does not pertain at this point to municipal solid waste, so all of our solid waste will continue as is. However, you are exactly right and Mr. Dempsey is exactly right. The separation and separate collection of food waste is going to come. It's, I don't think it's there yet, but probably within the next five years or so, it will be a serious issue that we will have to deal with. We were able to meet with a company today called Zero Waste and spent about an hour and a half talking about exactly that, what the future would hold for the town of Brookline in terms of separate collection of food waste. I like to do things in stages and as you see, as I roll out my plan for solid waste collection and disposal over the next few years, you're going to see it implemented in stages with your approval, of course. You know, perhaps going to a totter system or other types of hybrid pay-as-you-throw or even pay-as-you-throw systems. And at some point, at the end of the line, food waste, separate food waste collection and disposal will be certainly part of that, so.
Very good. Any further questions or comments? Well, I appreciate Mr. Dempsey's comments because we trust what you think about this, John, and frankly, I'm relieved to know that we're on the same page here. So, without further ado, I'm going to move that we award and execute contract number PW 1501 for disposal of solid waste in the amount of $479,276 with Cassella Waste Management of Massachusetts, Inc. of Peabody. All those in favor, say aye. Selectman Daley.
Aye.
Selectman DeWitt.
Aye.
Selectman Waschinsky.
Aye.
Selectman Franco.
Aye.
And the chair also votes aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving on to the question of approving water and sewer rates for fiscal year 2015. Commissioner Papa Sturgeon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, this is the trifecta tonight. I stand before you with heavy heart tonight because this is the first time in 34 years, 34 years, that I will not be presenting the water and sewer rates. We have our new water and sewer director, Fred Russell, who was just chomping at the bar. bit to come before you to present the proposed water and sewer rates for FY15, and I've agreed to step aside and allow him to do that, so. But, but just getting back to your point.
I believe Mr. Russell has received, I'm calling it an award, it seems he is a Public Works Leadership Fellow.
Yes.
Want to tell us about that?
The American Public Works Association, and I probably should let him talk about it, but the American Public Works Association has a program of four different steps for public works professionals where they can, they can undergo training with a mentor and achieve different levels of competency and professionalism in the, in the industry. We were fortunate when Fred came. Fred is the second person on my staff to be acclaimed at the highest step, which is what they designated as a Public Works Leadership Fellow, which means that he is now a mentor for other public works professionals across the country, and it's a very high honor. I should note that, that our Director of Parks and Open Space, Erin Galantine, was also conferred with that honor a year, about a year ago. So it's really, it's really great that we have two folks on our staff at that level. It just shows the level of professionalism that we have in our Department of Public Works, so.
And you can take some credit, Commissioner.
Well, I try to guide them. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Fred Russell.
Thank you.
Thank you. Andy was actually being kind. It was one of those awards or designations that tells you that you've been doing this for too long and you're getting old, so. And against my better judgment, I actually asked him not to show up tonight because he maybe has some withdrawals after 34 years. So with that, thank you. I've got just a few slides, just to, you've got a packet with you, just to sort of summarize our thinking process into, into how we presented the, the water and sewer rates moving forward. Just a quick overview of the water budget, and what the key thing, or the key element that I wanted you to look on here is the, the amount of the, what makes up the MWR investment, assessment, I'm sorry, with this water budget. It's roughly more than half is based on the assessment from the, from the MWRA for the water. And as you can see at the bottom, from fiscal year 14 to fiscal year 15, we were up about 10.9% from the water end. Moving forward to the, to the sewer, you can see it's about 84%. And just keep those numbers in mind as I show you the next slide. But as you can see here, this was our saving grace, believe it or not, is that we actually had a decrease in our MWRA sewer assessment, and that primarily was due to the Lower Beacon Street Combined Sewer Separation Project, which removed a lot of clean water out of the sanitary sewer, which we were able to reap a benefit from. Now, if you look, the next 10 years for the MWRA, you can see what they're projecting for rates. As the previous slide said, we had a 10.9 increase in water but a reduction in sewer. That equated to about a 2.7% over, increase overall, which you can see is less than the average, which is 3.6. So from, from a standpoint of, of other municipalities, we actually did a great job because we were less than the actual average. Just to give you some numbers, if we were at 3.6%, that was, that would be another, probably another $170,000 to $180,000 we'd have to come up with if we were at that average as, and rather than below it. One of the other things we, we're contending with as far as the rates is consumption. If we don't sell water, we don't make money. As you can see, the, the consumption levels have been steadily decreasing over the last 20 years. We anticipate that to continue, but ultimately, it, we should be leveling off soon. So what, you actually have this in your packet. This is just a comparison of the FY14 and the FY15 rates. There will be a slight increase in Block 1, a little larger increase in the Block 2 usage, and also similar in the irrigation fee as well. What does that equate to? If you take an average, we're proposing an increase of about 1.2% across the board. If you take the average residence, which uses 120 HCFs, comparing them to last year's rates, this year's rates, it's about a $17.65 increase per year, per average household, which is where we came up with the 1.2%. So that will do it. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Board members?
I do have a question. Yeah. So the, the block rates are based on your usage, right?
Correct.
So, because I keep hearing from some elderly people who live, you know, single-family households, who don't use much. So they're not really going to be too affected by this increase because the base rate is not increasing.
Right. The base rate's staying the same. The base rate gives us some level of predictability of, of income each year. It essentially takes roughly about a third of, of what we charge out and, and levels it off so that it's not as volatile as the other, it's not based on consumption.
Right. But you get a certain amount of usage in the base rate before you start paying for the block.
First of all, the first block you're talking about. There's a base rate, then there's a block, first block and then a second block.
Yeah. So for the, if you're paying for the base rate, don't you get a certain amount of usage included in that, or no?
No.
No. No. Zero to 700 cubic feet.
Okay. So everybody is going to be affected by this increase?
Typically, the, the elderly that you're talking about are usually within that first block.
Okay.
Don't forget, we do also offer a, an abatement as well.
Is it exempt, right?
Correct. Which is also in your packet.
Okay.
Selectman Franco.
I've got a question about the usage. So it seems to me that, that if you are a single-family home who uses a lot of water, there's no differentiation between your rate and a multifamily dwelling, which by definition of the fact that there's multiple families in there, has a higher water utilization. Is that a correct assumption?
Currently, that is correct.
Okay.
Any other questions? Any members of the public here to speak on this? Yes, sir. Mr. Gordon?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Fry.
Mr. Fry.
Mr. Fry, come forward.
Hold on. Are they doing? Ernie Fry, Precinct 7, but more importantly, a condominium owner in, in the town of Brookline. Statement was just made that the usage of a condominium, by a condominium, was equal to a person who owns a single-family house. That's not so, at least based on my, my review. A condominium, like, I live in a, I live, I have one unit in a six-unit condominium, and we are serviced by a single meter. And these rates are based on what flows through a meter. So in my case, I am charged, I go into Block 2 for all, all of, when 700 cubic feet of water flow through that meter, which is being used by all six units. And so basically, I'm paying a higher amount for my water than a person who owns a single-family house. Now, I've, I raised this issue with Mr. Russell when he initially took on the job, and he wasn't yet, he was trying to learn what Brookline was all about at that point, and wasn't, didn't have the time, and, you know, he had a lot of things on his, on his, on his plate. But now that he's been through an annual process and the rating process and an annual budget, I, I talked to him a couple of days ago, and he said that he would be happy to work with, with me and anybody else, he'd take a look at this situation to see if it could somehow be made equitable, the rates for a single-family house versus an owner of a condominium unit. Basically, it's a, it's a rather minor adjustment to the rate calculation process. In my case, instead of, for the meter that's going through into my unit, because there's six units, instead of 700 cubic feet being charged at Block 1, it should be 6 times 700, or 4,200 square feet. And the problem is going to be in identifying what that block rate is going to be for each condominium unit. Now, it's, there's some thing like, I got a note here, there's 1,163 residential condominium associations in Brookline with 10,000 residential units, not, not quite 10,000 residential units. So there's quite a bit here. And in my case, for my building, the overcharge for, per quarter, at least in my, from my definition, is like $257 per quarter. So, for that meter. So I'm going to be hoping that I'll be able to work with Mr. Russell to rectify this situation.
Okay. Mr. Russell, do you want to respond to it? It seems to make sense, what Mr. Fry is saying, that is the effect.
When Mr. Fry first called me, I believe I was probably on the job for two weeks, and I explained to him that, you know, let me absorb things, that sort of thing. I know the budget for this fiscal year had already been set. We were just working the rates, and that ultimately comes FY16, I could probably at least, you know, look into it and see what the impact would be from the town's standpoint and from the condos, and maybe come up with something, some solution that's equitable.
Commissioner Pappas Sturgeon.
I, I just want to caution the board. We spent two years developing this rate structure, and as you can imagine, it's incredibly complicated, all the number crunching that we had to do. And as, I encourage Mr. Russell and Mr. Fry to, to go forward and to, and to study and analyze this situation because on the surface, it appears inherently unfair. However, there are other factors that the, that the Selectmen's Committee that set these rates did look at. Selectman Banker at the time was on the committee as well, as well as the Director of Finance, Steve Sorillo. As you can imagine, and I want, don't want to belabor this point, only that it, it, the town of Brookline has to spend a lot more money in its capital investment on the infrastructure to provide water capacity for larger buildings. That is part of the reason why, when you are under a flat rate structure for water, those large buildings were actually getting a, a break as compared to a smaller, single-family residential unit because of the, the capacity needs and the cost to provide that capacity. So I'm going to be talking to Fred as he moves forward, but enlighten him as to what all the factors are that surrounded the decision to do, to set the structure as we did. But there's a lot more to it than just taking the amount of water that goes into a six-unit building and instead of charging it off as one meter, dividing it by six. It's a little bit more complicated than that.
Thank you. Selectman Waschinsky.
It seems to me, too, that if we wanted to be, provide complete parity, it wouldn't just be the, the lower block rate, it would also be the base rate. So, yes, the single-family home for the first seven HCFs, what is it, what is HCFs?
Hundred cubic.
Hundred cubic.
Thank you. But they're all, then they're paying $50 upfront, so if we were to do exactly what Mr. Fry was suggesting, he'd be getting the benefit of the lower block rate without the, the increase of the base rate. So there would have to be some adjustment there, I would think.
That's my point. It's complicated.
Just, I'm actually remembering, I believe, we did have this issue come before us when you first introduced the new rate structure. So perhaps something that might, and you, you probably got records about this, but it seems to me that we were unable to figure out how to make the accommodation that Mr. Fry would like. But I know that there is data that, and there was a discussion at that time, and I'm, I'm just sort of hoping that at least for Mr. Russell's benefit, there's some documentation that he can refer to.
Well, we have plenty of data.
Yeah. Because I'm pretty sure we talked about this before. I have a very clear image.
We did.
Yeah. Okay. Further questions or comments from board members, or members of the public for that matter? Excellent. Well, you know, I hope that Mr. Russell will continue to work on this for next year's rates to see if we can provide the missing equity that, that we've been discussing. But for this year, I think we're as close as, as, as we're going to get in terms of equity, and therefore, I'm going to move that we approve the water and sewer rates for fiscal year 2015 as described in our package this evening. And all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman DeWitt?
Aye. Only one observation, there's a very long vote, so we're actually referring to the vote on page 15-3. Aye.
Good, thank you. Selectman Waschinsky?
Aye.
Aye. Selectman Franco?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, and that's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Next matter is the question of approving and executing a pilot agreement with Beaver Country Day School. Mr. Sorillo.
Good evening. I appear before you this evening to present and recommend to you the acceptance of a payment-in-lieux-of-tax agreement between the Beaver Country Day School and the town of Brookline. Appearing with me this evening is Robert Allen, the Special Counsel for the school. Before I describe the agreement, I, there are a few people I would like to thank. There's been a lot of work put into this agreement over the last couple of years. First of all, I would like to thank Bill O'Reilly, the Chairman of the Board of Trustees for the school, and Peter Hutton, the Headmaster, and Tim Parsons, the Business Manager of the school. On the town side, the tremendous work that was done by Gary McCabe and Lisa Parides, and especially Jocelyn Murphy, and I would particularly like to thank Mel Kleckner. I really thank you for helping us in this one. This is the, this is the 15th pilot that the town has, and there is a, when we, we follow a policy that was adopted by the Board of Selectmen in 2009 and amended in 2011, and this policy, this agreement sticks to the core principles of the policy, and that is that the pilot target is 25%, represents what a nonprofit would have been paid, let me put it this way, it represents the part of the, portion of the tax rate that supports the police, fire, and public works, public works, snow removal, and road maintenance. And so we stick to that policy, but the other part of the policy is that we're allowed to phase up the annual payment amount to that 25% level. And that's important for nonprofits. Nonprofits, for the most part, they may need a little encouragement to have these discussions on pilots, but in the end, they're willing to do so, but they have to get acclimated to the numbers, particularly if you're a nonprofit that has a lot of land and very little building, because there's a lot of value in that land. And so by allowing a longer term for phasing up to the 25%, it allows the nonprofit to, to begin at a level that is acceptable for them and then have predictable increases, annual increases to get them to the 25% mark. And in fact, this is what this agreement does. This agreement is a 25-year term. It phases up from about $14,000 per year up to $176,000 per year. The total revenue generated, if the contract would go to the full 25 years, is nearly $2.5 million. And I was thinking about the 15 pilots we have, if, if you take all of the 15 pilots and you bring them up to the max, the 25% level, we would be generating about $1.5 million per year of revenue. Currently, we're generating over $600,000 a year in pilot revenue, and that'll, when all of these 15 pilots are up to their maximal target level, will be over $1.6 million. So the town has a successful program, and we should continue this. There are a number of nonprofits out there that we'd like to have discussions with in the near future. I will name them if anyone wants to hear them. The one last thing I'll say about this is that it, this diverges from some of the other pilots in that the, each pilot has an opt-in, opt-out pilots in that the, each pilot has an opt-in, opt-out provision in it, and many of those opt-ins and opt-outs are written at three-to-four-to-five-year mark. This one has a one-year opt-in, opt-out provision. Either party has to do it in writing within one-year notice. That ties the similar language that you saw in a previous discussion earlier this evening with the revocable license. So, the symmetry in those two agreements, but that's the only, the symmetry without connecting the two documents. So, I did want to point that out. And now, if, unless you have any further questions for me about this, if Mr. Allen would like to make any comments, I would like to thank the school, the Board of Trustees, particularly in this, just the school family. They stayed in there with us for the whole two or three years. They worked hard at this, they were committed to it, and they wanted to get it done, and we presented it to you this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Sorillo. Questions for Mr. Sorillo from board members?
No, I'll just make a statement. I, again, I objected to the agreement that was proposed a couple of years ago, where it seemed it was the two, the use of our fields and the pilot agreement were explicitly linked, and I felt that the town should not be selling its recreational facilities in that manner. But this is the two, while they, while this does give them the one-year opt-out, and I'm sure they would opt-out if we opted out of the use of the field, but they're no longer explicitly linked. So, I have no problem with it anymore.
Selectman Franco.
I think I terrorized Mr. Sorillo and the town administrator over the past two days on this point, and I just want to make sure that the viewing public is clear on the fact that, and correct me if I'm wrong, that if improvements are made to the schools' facilities in the future, there is the possibility that the pilot payment may be adjusted accordingly.
Yeah, absolutely. And first of all, the questions that you asked were very good questions. One of the other key components of the policy that was accepted by the Board of Selectmen five years ago was that the pilot target numbers would be based on value, not on, let's pluck a number out of the sky. And so, one of the things that has changed in our overall financial performance is that our assessing division values all nonprofits. In prior years, there was no reason to value nonprofits, of course, because there's no tax bill, so, or there was a tax exemption of a bill. And so, in 10 or 15 years ago, there really wasn't a clear, accurate measurement of value. Now, all the pilots are based on the true 100 percent value, and it goes through this formula that says, well, if this were to be taxed, what would 25 percent be, which is the pilot target amount? And then we start the phase up from there. So, first of all, it's based on value. Second of all, the language in this agreement speaks to the point that if there's any additional purchase of land or construction, a major construction of the facility, existing facility, that we can go back and adjust the number without negotiations is already in this, covered in this agreement. You know, minor changes, you know, let's fix a bathroom up or something like that. I'm not sure that we're going to drill down that deeply, but the large ones will be incorporated.
Thank you. Any other questions from board members? Attorney Allen, would you like to talk to us about this on behalf of Beaver?
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, nice to see you all. Ms. Parks, nice to see you all late on a Tuesday night. I know how much you love this. Let me just.
It's not that late.
For Patty, it's very late. Let me just, of course, Steve didn't thank himself, but he did a wonderful job representing the town in this negotiation that has went on for quite a period of time. You know, I was, I was involved in the initial discussion about pilots with the board back in 2009. I think it was, actually started before that with a conversation with BU. And I think what I respect a lot about this, this process is that Beaver jumped into this openly. If you really step back, and I understood Selectman Daley's points a couple of years ago, but, you know, the partnership between the town and Beaver has existed for a very long time, and it works. You know, the way this town is with tight on fields, and there's certain fields we have, there's certain fields we need, and without these partnerships, things wouldn't work. And Beaver, to its credit, has always worked with the town, and the town has always worked with Beaver, and it works very well in the recreation department. And now, Beaver's doing some nice improvements to their field, and I think the town will benefit in the long run from that also. But I do think that the board's discussion a year ago, whenever we last, did help this agreement come along. You know, Attorney Murphy coming on board, that last town council can be very difficult.
[laughing]
Attorney Murphy, working with her, was, we were able to iron out a couple of things, and I think Selectman Banker had some points last time that we're able to address. And, you know, Mr. Sorillo stuck with this. He really is a dog on a bone with these pilot agreements, which is, which is great. You know, I mean, where you stop with these pilot agreements, who knows? That's, that's for you all to decide. But clearly, I think Beaver recognized, and particularly Mr. Hutton, I mean, listen, he's the headmaster of a private school in Brookline, and not all private schools entered into pilot, and it's a small little circle, and he's probably going to hear from some other headmasters. And he was willing, he understands his responsibility, he lives in the town, he votes in the town, he understands his civic responsibility, he appreciates the service, and he said that from day one, and he was pushing all the time to enter into this agreement. So, with a lot of work from Mr. Sorillo, we were able to get that, and I hope the board approves it tonight. This is a good document, it's good for the town, it's good for the school.
Thank you, Attorney Allen. Mr. Kleckner, do you have a comment?
Well, I just would like to also thank Beaver Country Day School, their headmaster, Mr. Hutton, and others on their board for taking this, this step. You know, it is a voluntary payment, and so, it's not always easy to volunteer to give away some of your hard-earned money, in the case of Beaver Country Day, their tuition and other assets. But I think, as Attorney Allen stated, there is a great relationship, a long-term relationship, and an acknowledgement that municipal services do cost, whether you're nonprofit, tax-exempt or not. I also want to specifically acknowledge Steve's, Sorillo's effort. He thanked a lot of other people, but I want to thank Steve. Dog on a bone would be one way to put it, but Steve is very tenacious when it comes to these. And I think it will be, prove very helpful to the town, not only financially, but politically as we begin to embark on a discussion of increasing taxes over above, over and above the proposition to and half limit next year, and the town's showing that it's making every effort possible to alleviate the impact on the residential property taxpayers. So, I just want to say thank you for all your efforts, and it was really a great cooperative effort between the town and Beaver Country Day School.
Great. Anyone else with comments, including anybody in the audience tonight? I'll let you echo my thanks to town staff and to Attorney Allen and to the administration at Beaver Country Day School for their perseverance and for their cooperation. Hope this is the beginning of other pilot arrangements with some of our other private schools in town. Anything further before I move it? Okay. I therefore move that we approve and execute a pilot agreement with Beaver Country Day School in the form that was in our package. All those in favor, say aye. Selectman Daley.
Aye.
Selectman DeWitt.
Aye.
Selectman Woszinski.
Aye.
Selectman Franco.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Good evening. Just a couple of things left here.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to note that Henry Winkelman is present. If anyone has any questions for him?
He is present, so, but on the other hand, it's, we're not really up for an interview with Mr. Winkelman here. We were going to vote some appointments.
Okay.
Now, I know that we hadn't technically interviewed Mr. Winkelman, except we did so indirectly a couple of weeks ago, if you remember, when we heard about the initiative that Mr. Winkelman had brought regarding the potential to build elderly housing in airspaces. And so, we've heard from him, I know I've talked to him extensively about it, and if anybody has any questions for him, and he is here, but I'm ready to move his appointment myself. Anybody?
Sure.
Okay. So, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Kleckner to do the motions for the two committee appointments.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the first committee is the Age Friendly City Committee. There are vacancies, and Henry Winkelman is the nominee for consideration tonight. All those in favor, Mr. Winkelman.
Aye.
And, thank you. And the next commission or committee is the Brookline Commission for the Arts, and we have previously interviewed for that vacancy. And there is a one candidate for a vacancy that expires in 2016, Renana Greenberg.
Aye.
Aye. And for the record, previously, we held this nomination because she was not a Brookline resident, and in the meantime, the Brookline Commission for the Arts have modified their bylaws to include non-residents in order to be members who bring skill sets. And in Renana's case in particular, she teaches at Brookline Adult and Community Education.
Great. Thank you. We did postpone earlier this evening our question, L, in the miscellaneous calendar of setting the board's summer meeting schedule. Any comments, a question on the proposed schedule?
No, I will just note, we don't usually, we haven't usually voted this in the past, but since it was on the.
It's in there, and obviously.
I'm happy to vote on it.
Subject to change, too, so I will.
No, once I make my ferry reservations, I'm not changing. So, you, we vote this?
Done. Okay.
Set.
I just have a, sort of a procedural question. Given that the Fourth of July is on a Friday, and we have a meeting the following Tuesday, when will our meeting materials be distributed?
Hopefully on Thursday.
Okay. I just, it works for me.
Good. So, you're right, I don't recall ever voting this before, but I will since it's here, move that we accept the summer's meeting schedule as presented in our package. Selectman Daley.
Aye.
Selectman DeWitt.
Yeah. I don't think we have to vote this.
That's a change. Selectman Woszinski.
Why not?
Why not?
Why not?
Selectman Franco.
Sure.
And the vote, and the chair votes, I guess so. Our meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.
Record early, by the way.